The Springbrough Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, May 12th, 2015. Roll call?
Regina.
Here.
Petroni, Malone, Anderson.
Here.
Here.
I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes. I should've said before we start that I will need both your participation. Item 1.3, approval of April 30th, 2015 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Just so you know, Jim, I did add that page in financials and fix it, upload it, so it's in the file.
Okay, thank you.
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 2.1, Springbrough Education Report. I don't think there is one. Item 2.2, Springbrough Classified Employees Association Report. I believe there's one coming. And then public participation, no one has prearranged to speak. Item 3.1, approval of resolution authorizing 2015 S.A. membership in Ohio High School Athletic Association.
Yes, this is just the typical, we have to do this every year so that our kids can participate in the OHSSAA league, basically.
Is there a motion? Is there a move? A second?
Second.
Roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes. Motion passes.
3.2 is the first reading of policy 5111, homeless students, and first reading for 5112 entrance age. The whole, I wasn't at this particular policy meeting, I was actually negotiating, but I did read over the homeless student policy today, and it really is nothing new as I read it. This was in place when I was an assistant principal 10 years ago, so it's just kind of updated on Paul Berbers. We are responsible to if a student, if our student becomes homeless, and then they just give all the different definitions of homeless. But there is definitely some expense to that, if that takes place.
Um, spring, go ahead. I'll go with policies too. Why is it that these policies came forward, for revision? Was there a particular?
The old, the old updates.
So it's just a regular suggestion from Neil.
Correct.
And I guess, when I read these, it brought up a couple of issues that, that I think that we ought to at least have a discussion about. Because, you know, entrance age and homeless students are pretty innocuous names, but when you get down inside these policies, in the entrance age policy, one of the things that it does is it relaxes the documentation that's required for admission. The homeless students, basically, are saying that if you're a homeless student, you get all the privileges that, that any other student would get. Everything, from gift services to anticipation sports and everything. And my concern is that with all of the illegal immigrants that are coming into the country now, that relaxing the entrance requirements and these rule, I think that intentional or not intentional, what this does is, is it, it potentially removes or doesn't protect, number one, our students. If we end up having to serve kids that are basically illegal students, that shouldn't be here, that, that by right are not entitled to an education. Springbrough, we're diluting the education and the resources that we have to give to our kids. And I think that we ought to look at, is there some language that we can put in here that would provide some protection against that dilution of resources? And then also, that would protect our taxpayers from, I don't think Springbrough taxpayers feel that they ought to be providing an education to any student in the world that might choose to end up in Springbrough. And so, I know those are sensitive issues, I think it deserves some discussion as to what we might do. I think that...
It would be helpful to me, Jim, if Mr. Regina, if you could email me that specifically. It's a very valid point. I mean, when I said early on, even though the kids, they may not even reside in the district, and if they're homeless, we may have to bust them for an hour because they became homeless while they were in, it, it doesn't make any sense, and most of these things are based on the law. But yours is very specific about the illegal immigrant, so if you could email me specifically, email me, Ashley, and John, then I, we do need to look at that a little bit.
And we are.
We spend a lot of money on kids that have never even set foot in one of our buildings. Yes, we do.
Well, that's interesting. I didn't, I wasn't even wearing that, but...
In the area of special ed, we did.
You know, if, if one of our kids becomes homeless, we certainly want to take care of somebody who is...
Right.
Who is a legal resident of the district, you know, even, even if, I know we have laxness access in the neighborhood, and we have some people who may not be citizens come and work here, and they live here, and I, they're certainly not the people that I'm thinking here, but, you know, people who cross the border illegally, and they're just, you know...
And the kids do have some rights in that situation that the adults don't, so we need to check on that. Because, I mean, I'm all for, Springbrough taxpayer money should go to Springbrough kids, and when we have kids that we know they don't live in our district, we will ask them to, we always ask them to go to their closest school that they should be in, so, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong at all with what you're asking, it's just, I want you to be specific so I get it right, because on that illegal immigrant, there's a lot of, there's, the kids have a lot of rights when their parents bring them here. Even though the parents might be illegal, the kids have some rights.
Well, if...
So...
That, that would be an interesting debate, because if you're, if you're not a citizen, I don't know how you get rights in, in our country.
Jim, I don't write these laws, and a lot of people disagree with them, but I can tell you the law.
I have trouble imagining a law that says Springbrough taxpayers would have to pay for an education for any child in the world who manages to find their way to Springbrough. I have tr- I have trouble believing that that law exists, number one, and I have trouble believing that if it exists, that it could ever stand a judicial challenge, or, yeah. So, at any rate, we know things are pretty crazy. The, the other thing that, I would say that, I'm not trying to usurp anybody's authority when I say this, but I do think that the circumstances, if they come forward, they ought to be voted on by board, because one of the changes here was that this, that they would be admitted according to the superintendent's guidelines. And I just think that in this gray area of whether this child should have, deserve an education or not, that it ought to be decided by, given that Springbrough taxpayers are going to pay for it, it ought to be decided by the elected representatives.
The guideline has to match the policy. If the guideline doesn't match the policy, then the guideline has to be changed. So, and right now, we don't have a guideline, but let's just start with getting law for, if you'll email me the main question, I'll get an answer to that, and then we, I mean, we can take our time with this, by all means, but I'll get an answer to that one, and then bring that to, back to the next board meeting.
Why don't we just table this?
Well, you can stay on first reading. Once it's first reading, what Jim's doing is what's supposed to be done, people just ask questions about it. Then ultimately, if the committee, if they just feel it's not a big deal, the board automatically always has the right, as, if they're your po- your policies, I'm just recommending to you based off where we're at. But clearly, there are some things to you that, you feel are paramount in comparison to what we feel in terms of running the district. So, on this one, I'll give you the law, because I, this one I don't know, I know a lot about the homeless act, just from the simple fact I've dealt with homeless kids, but not illegal immigrants. That would be another one.
The last thing there, after G says pursuant to federal and state law migratory children, or, is that migratory ones?
That could be immigrant. I, I want to say that they get it for free, and we have to pay for it. It's the law, but I'm not going to quote that.
I do know, we, in my former district, we got challenged on one that, for a child that was homeless. They want homeless in our district, when they went homeless, that they allowed them to choose wherever they wanted to be educated because they weren't homeless. So we had to pick them, and we, we didn't have a choice. So there is some, I do know there are some laws and rules, and we'll have to kind of get all that sorted out, but...
I'm just thinking, it's, it's awful easy to claim you're homeless, right?
Well, I think they go, I think they go through the county.
It's easy to prove if they're homeless, because they have to go through the county to certify.
Yeah, they have to go through the county, and there's certain doc, there's certain documentation they need to have, like with the, with the local service, human services in the area. There are things that you have to go through in order to be identified as homeless first.
And a lot of these originate from spousal abuse, to where there's violence in the home, and the mother has to flee, and then in that case, we...
Certainly don't want to, I mean, I'm not talking about that specifically.
Okay, but I, I think the immigrant, illegal immigrant for the children, okay, once they're here, they're citizens, so...
Well, no, they're not citizens, but whether they, whether or not they need to be served is the question, and I just think, I just think we ought to discuss that.
I think they send, like, a lot of times they'll send the parents back somewhere, or maybe the kids are in foster care.
Yep. So basically, you're wanting to know, do we have to serve children who are illegal immigrants?
No, what I, what I want to know is how do we protect Springbrough taxpayers and our students from diluting our, the educational services that we have to provide? And that's really what I want to know, and, and are, are these changes working against that goal? And as I, as I was reading it, it seemed that they...
I mean, there are no changes we make, this was brought forward, forward as is, and that policy, it's kind of old, but, so homeless or immigrant, so, all right, we'll check it out, that's our problem.
I'll, I'll leave that in with my specific questions.
That'd be wonderful, if you could, and copy Ashley for sure, and just in case, because I'm getting a lot of everything, and I won't pass it out, so, we'll get, we'll get it checked out.
When we move on to 3.3?
We have a lot of people to recognize tonight for donations. First, Jen Elenjanko, who is a teacher at Dennis, one Channel 2 River Valley Credit Union Teacher of the Month, and kindly has donated $200 to this, or back to be used in her classroom at Dennis.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes. Motion passes.
Next is another teacher I've worked with. Years ago, her name is Holly von Gallia. She's a retired teacher, donated children books in the volume of $235 in memory of her late husband, Omar von Gallia. She was an outstanding reading intervention teacher, so I bet she has some really great books that she's donated to us.
Is there a motion? Is there a move? Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Regina.
You know, before we, before we, I, I will just second your comments, Mr. Petrie, because this is the Gallia, was my son's reading, and my older son's reading intervention teacher. When she was done providing intervention for him, he was reading a book grade level.
She was outstanding.
She, she definitely was.
She put the time in too, I'll tell you.
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have Jeff, Tammy, and Abby Jones, who's a 2014 graduate, donating a cello valued at $4,000 to the strings program. Wow. Thank you.
Thank you again. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes. Motion passes.
Next, request approval for donation of a bass valued at $2,700 from Tamara Hoss.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Motion passed, or, roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yep.
Motion passes.
Next, the Springbrough Miss Club donated viola valued at $800 to the strings program.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes. Motion passes.
Next is approval of donation of $19,269.51 from the Springbrough Athletic Bluesters.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Is that for the late room?
There were several things that they were doing, that they were donating money to, that, one of them was the press box, there was the girls' soccer uniforms, football, volleyball uniforms, backpacks for the swim and dive teams, uniforms for boys soccer, instruction for bowling, and cold weather clothing and spirit supplies for sideline cheer.
Thank you, John.
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, I'll be joining the human resources report tonight. Ms. Benson had some family matters that had to be tended to. First is 4.1, approval of certified position for high school business teacher. A little bit explanation, Andrea, is here in case I don't fully get it right. She and Mr. Martin have been doing a great job turning around cost. What's going to happen with this, we have a teacher who is retiring, and the position that teacher was in, we're now going to, in the past, we've had two PE teachers, a male and a female, and we've had classes of 25 or 30. And so, we only need one teacher to do that. I, I didn't know that we had a male and female teacher there, no other verb has had that, we need one teacher. And the issue, I think, is the concern's been, we have male and female students dressing, dealt that many a time, so we will have, our building aid is there just to get the boys out, since we'll have a female teacher. So we're capturing a savings of reducing that one PE position, so instead of replacing the teacher who is retiring, that PE teacher will move into that health position, so we're saving that cost of the PE teacher, which we'll use to pay for the business teacher. Now, the question's going to be, in an executive session, I want to talk to you about one staff matter, another reduction that could be made. Before we do that, I certainly want to know the board's okay with it, to where we stay cost neutral to pay for this full position. Otherwise, there is a possibility that we may need to have at half of a PE position here at the junior high, because the numbers come, you know, and then pass on to the high school. I clearly have a way that we don't need to do that, but at the same time, it's something I will talk about before, before we make that decision, so. But at this point, we have to have the business teacher, we've had roughly, what, 500 kids sign up for business?
We have, intro to personal finance, over 530 students signed up.
So it's, it's amazing this year, this business just took off. So instead of just hiring a business teacher, we're reducing from within to put the, the teacher there.
Another 45, and AP my three colors were thrown out, so if not any color, I have some.
So did I explain all that right?
You got it.
Do I get a collar, high school credit or something for that?
You can be a senior.
Gold star.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes. Motion passes.
4.2, this is for a head cook at Clear Creek. We're opening up the first grade building, and due to the fact that we'll have 400 more kids there, or how many, yeah, roughly that.
Actually, we'll be serving lunch for the first time in many years.
That does not come out of the general fund, it comes out of the account, the cook's account of the city. Those kids, in the increase we would've had, we would've had to have over five ones anyways. So with this, we're adding this to the first grade building. And then, that's, that's going to need to vote on that first.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we're also adding an assistant cook, and it appears this is approximately four and a half hours a day. The head cook is five hours a day. How much is that, John, typically, for an hour?
I don't know. Depends on what, where they fall.
$10 or $12 an hour, probably?
Something like that, there's, yeah.
Something more around that.
Correct.
So we're looking at about $8,000 or $9,000 a year, probably?
If it's a, if it's a cook, it's something like food service.
Right, yeah, it all comes out of food service, so it doesn't affect the general fund anyway.
I was just trying to look at a price on that. Okay, so that's for the assistant to cook at Clear Creek.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes. Motion passes.
4.4 is approval of Title I summer school positions from June 15th to the 26th, for three hours a day, $26.97 per hour. It's two math interventions at the high school, two math intervention at Dennis, and eight reading intervention at Dennis. This comes out of our Title I money. However, we still have to have it approved by the board.
Motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes. Motion passes.
4.5, approval of all personnel items, as recommended by me, through the Personnel File, Personnel Report.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second, just a question. Are Perkins retiring, don't I say?
Who?
Harper?
Roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes. Motion passes. We'll run the business managers report.
Mr. President, members of the board, for your consideration, approval of a building use form for the Ohio Sirens Football Club, which is a women's soccer club that's going to have a couple matches at Wade Field. We've negotiated a price of $100 per hour, and that's about how long it takes to play us, the soccer games there, and it'll be for July 3rd and July 25th.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Regina.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes. Motion passes. And move on to, any board member reports? Mr. Stuckey.
Comments?
Mr. Regina?
We have another board meeting in, in May, though.
28.
Well, I'll, I'll make sure that I have some for that. I did not come prepared today, I've been pretty busy, so, I'll make sure that I have some, but they're probably more appropriate for the next meeting.
We're good. We'll look forward to it. You have something, yeah, I'll look forward to that. I wanted to say, I had this packet here, the, I'll just read it, Students at Dennis Elementary, hope you enjoy reading these thank you cards during Random Acts of Kindness Week. Our school service project was to met people who serve our community, know how much we appreciate them. Thank you for all you do for our community, enjoy the cards. So, I have a whole stack of cards, and, oh, there's one of Mr. Stuckey, let's see, thank you for your time and effort to go to the meetings and to help our school district. I would also like to say I appreciate you letting schools take field trips. Thank you also for helping Springbrough Community School. Most of these are just board members, but I guess, no, these are all, I don't know, these are separate, so, anyway, for anyone who would like to see them, I've got them here, and we certainly thank the students at Dennis for your kind words, and appreciate it. So with that, any public announcements?
Yeah, a couple, board members, we have the senior awards night on May 26th, 6:00 PM at the high school. If you'd like to attend, that'd be wonderful. If you're going to attend, let me know, because I'd like to recognize you. Also, on June 1st, that's our retirement dinner for all staff retiring at Heathers. Would love for all of you to attend that evening. June 1st, 6:00 PM, Heathers.
What would be senior awards?
May 26th, 6:00 PM. And I think this Thursday at 6:00 or 7:00 is the ROTC dinner, and there is the Warren County Career Center graduation. Let's see, other than that, there's graduation, once again, on Saturday, June 6th, 6:00 PM. Mr. Anderson, you want to make a couple comments again this year? Did you make comments last year?
No, I didn't make any last year.
Well, that was, that was our opening day thing, where it's...
Oh, yeah, that was, no. I'm good, I'm good. We used to, back in, I was on the board before, we always, but anyway, no, I'm good, no, I'm good.
You weren't recording the microphone, Mr. Anderson.
No, I think it, I think it went well the way it was. So, at this time, do you want to just convene for work session, just go right into us?
Yeah.
So, that, I guess we're going to turn it over to our treasurer?
For the committee reports, I don't, we have a finance committee meeting on Friday, so everybody can...
Was there a business advisory?
You have a syndicate. What, what?
Whatever.
And what? Oh, yeah. Mr. Perry Council on Thursday. And there is Mr. Perry Council meeting on Thursday, although which of your own, I put it to 7:00 AM, it's up all. Your all, well.
I was gonna say, well, I have mine on now, I was thinking, was there something right here, maybe, uh, mine doesn't, oh, yeah, see, it is, you'll have to turn off the light. Just what you've all been waiting for, the five-year forecast.
Yes.
No one fall asleep without a light on, please. All right. Okay, this is going to be the May forecast update. I, I want to say first off, I'm probably going to be doing another one of these in June, possibly July at the latest, and that's because we're currently in negotiations right now with our certified union, so we don't have any of that outcome built into the five-year forecast at this time, nor do we have anything for the state budget, because it's still in process right now at the senate level, so we don't have any updates for that yet either. So, once we know what happens with that by the end of June, and once we know what's going on with our certified union, then we'll be able to revise this again to kind of give a better picture going into next year. So, sorry about that, scroll issue. Okay, so we can skip through that, that's just for reading, but we'll start out with the executive summary. This will kind of show, a, a lot of literature has gone, gone out to the board and to the community regarding the governor's proposal. The governor's proposal was House Bill 64, and it was his new proposal for a new funding formula that was going to start for this next biennial budget. So luckily, you can see, when you see these colors, you'll see the blue is our current forecast of what we have built into our current forecast. And right now, we have the 10 and a half percent cap that we received this year, and then we have slight growth increases built into the five-year, but that's just based off of what we had anticipated going with the current funding formula. So you can see, the orange is the House Bill 64, that's the governor's proposal. It's kinda deceiving, because what it doesn't show is eighteen and nineteen. So, the intermittent two years in the governor's proposal did not look bad for us, because it gave us increases even, you know, farther than what we had planned in our five-year forecast. However, what happens is, is the funding formula change that I've talked about before is, is a reduction of the state share, so that you can raise that money locally. And in doing that, eighteen and nineteen fell off for us, losing almost two million dollars over those next two years. So, this, um, house came out and said, gave another proposal for an even different funding formula, which looks a lot more promising for our district. Um, it, it tweaks the current funding formula, it's not a complete change of the funding formula like the governor proposed. Um, so you can see in this one, if the house, it's at the senate level right now, and if that goes through, the house's proposal goes through the senate, as is, the increases in gray would be what we would see. So, for us, that would be a one million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar change from what, what we have in our current forecast, if we get what is in the house's plan. Now, I, I'm, you know, the, the governor comes out with his plan, then the house will come out with their plan, and then the, the senate looks over both plans, and will probably come up with some sort of a, in, in between, you know, the two. So, we, we can't build any of this in our forecast right now, because it's still so volatile. I mean, between what the governor proposed and what the house proposed is actually, especially in future years, if that formula were to stay in existence, it would change drastically. So, currently, in the forecast that we are having, that we're gonna have to approve for May, will be our current forecast that we already have built in with no changes until we know more. So, I wanted just to show you, you can look through these graphs, I'm gonna post this on our website too, and then you guys have a copy too, so if you have questions as we go through, you'll be able to see that. Um, so, if you look at the bottom graph, we have just on this page, um, if you look at where our expenditures are, you can see in two thousand and twelve, we, we spent fifty, forty-one million, five sixty-four, eight twenty-two. Right now, for fiscal fourteen, we're looking at four, forty-four, six thirteen right now, that was our November forecast. Um, we're about, our revenue is coming in about a fourth of a percent higher than anticipated, and that's because we had a reappraisal this year, and we did, um, assume for an increase in our reappraisal. But actually, the new construction is actually coming even higher than what we anticipated. So we will receive a little bit of a boost in revenue for the new construction only. Um, and we also did receive slight, um, through the triennial update, we did receive valuation increases. That will have to roll back our millage, so that we can't get more than was originally voted. So we won't really get any increases from that, but we will get increases from the new construction. So that, but it's slight, and you'll see that, um, here shortly. If you go to the next page, um, this, this is just the, the same graph that's on the bottom of the last page, it's just a bigger graph, and it just kinda shows you better, um, our actuals and our projections that we have as far as our revenues, levies, and cash balances. You can see in the orange, our cash balances are dwindling. Um, we've been working very hard to control our expenses and to save as much money as we can, and you'll see some of those things here, um, as we go forward. But a big thing that will matter for this is our state funding. So if we lose state funding, if we gain state funding, that will be some, some dollars right there that will help increase or hurt, possibly decrease, our cash balance based off of what happens there.
So Tara, based on those cash balances, then, it's showing we would get all the way out to twenty-nineteen currently with the new levy, right?
Right, it shows out, our current forecast that we are, that I'm asking the board to approve, will show that we have a cash balance, but in nineteen as a positive, yes. But what we need to make sure we remember is, we're currently in negotiations. So, anything that happens in negotiations outside of steps, which were already law, that's why they're already in the forecast, because it's already been, you know, unless they negotiate those steps away, that was already in place. Any increases percentage-wise are not in this forecast, because they can't be, because we're still negotiating, and until that settles, we can't add that into our forecast. So anything from that cash balance that is given to the certified staff will come off the cash balance that you will see here in a little bit.
So, I mean, I'm looking at.
Well, actually, you can see it right now, three point five seven one million is what I show that we will have in nineteen.
And so I looked at, my goal, when I took this job, was to get to twenty-twenty. But now, of course, you've reduced the millage. So I'm accurate in saying, we'd have one point three million dollars more per year if that wouldn't have been reduced, which is three point nine million more that would have been added to three point five.
Yeah, we'd have around seven million in.
So we'd have, yeah, what, seven point four million or something like that left.
Yeah.
So we could've gotten to twenty-twenty, and gave teachers a raise.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, it, we've been fortunate that we have gotten some of these excess in revenue from the new construction, but obviously, that millage did, did hurt, because as you'll see, our revenue over expenditures, one point, like in sixteen, one point four, three hundred and fifty, one point three, one point five, we would've been, if not in the positive, close to the positive in every year, so.
So clearly, we're in the position now, if we give a raise at all, because under four million dollars is the trigger, we need to run a levy.
Right, so right now, without any raises, our, our levy, it shows five million, one seventeen. At the end of eighteen, we would need to have new money coming in for nineteen. And, don't forget, that renewal levy at three million, nine forty, that's a renewal levy showing that that's already coming in as well. So we have a renewal levy that needs to be passed in eighteen, to make sure that we get that money in in nineteen. So, absolutely. And anything that happens with the state budget right now, and anything that happens with the settling the contract with the teachers, will definitely come off of that, add or come off of that cash balance.
But with that money, if we wouldn't reduce the money that much, would've been left even after we settled with the teachers?
Right, we would've had about what we have right now, and that would've been with, well, depending on what happens with that, but that would be. Um, okay, so if we wanna go to the next page, um, I do wanna talk about the public utility. Everything that we're hearing so far, um, shows that we are on the mark now for getting that, for getting the new pipeline money. I know back in December, I had to revise the forecast, because we were hoping it would come in in the end of this current fiscal year. And in December, sometimes late November, but in December, they turned in their values of the upcoming year, and they turned in no value, so we had to do a revision to the five-year, take that value out. So unless, you know, we're gonna move forward with everything that we've been hearing, that they are definitely going to show value this year, and we're going to be receiving in the money this year. So we do have in our forecast, starting for the second half of sixteen and on, um, the new pipeline revenue. And I'm not anticipating any, anything going on with that, there are several other counties. Our county hasn't been as involved with this, um, and I know there's been a switch in auditors, um, one has retired, so maybe they're just kinda getting settled in, but I know Pickawatt County, it's, um, going through their district, and I know that they've been really watching it, and the treasurers that are in, um, P F R. that assist us with the five-year, um, they all have been hearing that they're making sure they get that revenue in for this, for this second half of sixteen. So I think we're good on that. Um, that's gonna bring in about nine hundred and sixty thousand over a year, period of time. So that will definitely, um, we're only gonna show half of that, though, for sixteen, because it'll be the second half when the first portion rolls in, um, that we're anticipating, so. So we can go on to the next page. You can see right there, where it shows in fifteen, uh, the year-over-year change, the fifty-one million, seven eighty-seven up there in the gray box. Um, that is the reappraisal. I believe in the previous forecast, I had fifty-one to ninety-seven. I think that's what I had in the last one, so we were really close, but, um, it actually did come in a little bit higher, which was where I said, we would be receiving a little more revenue, um, due to the new construction. And you can see where our collection rates, our taxpayers are awesome, we've been collecting right at a hundred percent, so. Um, and a little bit over, and even some places, getting some, um, previous delinquencies, um, paid as well. So, we're, we're really doing, our taxpayers are really doing good, paying their taxes on time, so that's awesome. Um, if we wanna go to the next page, I, I kinda briefly hit on this already. This is where you can see in fifteen to sixteen, the jump there in the, um, projected revenue, that is the new pipeline money. So, we do have half of it, um, four hundred and ninety thousand, or, yeah, nine sixty for the, for the total. It's about four, foursome on the first year, and then the rest coming in the second year, um, for a full year's, um, taxes. So, cross your fingers that that comes in, but from everything.
Second pipeline.
That's the, yeah.
The first one we started collecting, well, back in two thousand and ten?
Yes, um, and the one thing, the one thing that was a little bit difficult, we, we kinda, a whole bunch of us got together, and we're really trying to figure out, we searched everywhere we could find, and of all the stuff on the pipeline. And we really can't figure out exactly how big the pipeline is. So how we did it was, is I, I took half of the current pipeline, because we've been told it's smaller, we don't know exactly how much smaller, so those, when those values come in, if they're, I'll be able to, to discuss with the board any increases, I, I would assume, if anything, we're probably being a little bit, um, low on them, just because we're not sure. But it, we, we figured half of the, of the current pipeline for our estimate for the revenue that we're gonna get for the second pipeline. So I'll definitely let you guys know on that as soon as I hear more, but for now, at least we have a good amount in there. Um, let's see. So we can talk about the state funding a little bit more, although, yeah, this one right here. Um, so right now, we, we receive thirty-nine point two seven percent of our revenue is coming from our state funding. So I just, I always wanna make sure that I, I, I'm not leaving anything out, that this current forecast does show what we had anticipated in our previous forecast. So, until we know anything from the state, um, I don't want to, to change that, because anything I did differently, it would, I, I don't have anything solid yet, until the senate comes back with what they're gonna do. So currently, right now, we receive about, we're supposed to receive about two thousand two seventy-five per student. We are on a cap, so we're not getting all of that. But, um, you know, that's, that's our base core funding per pupil that we're supposed to be getting, is the two thousand two seventy-five per kid. So you can see the information up, well, it's actually above on there, but, um, of our core funding and what we have built in for the future. Right now, what I said is that I haven't changed it, we have a four percent and a five percent increase built in, that's our, what we have built in for the future. So as soon as I know something more from the state level on what that's gonna be, I will make sure that that will be in the revision that comes in June, when we're done with settling with the teachers, um, union as well, hopefully. Okay. Wanna go to page twelve? This, this is all stuff I just avoided, so, two or three times. Um, I, you will see a little bit of an increase. First of all, that seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, I, I, I know it sticks up, so it might be like, what is that? That's when every, every few years, they don't always do it on an exact, every three years or every two, but every few years, the county will settle up, so to speak, they'll take any money that they have accumulated over what they've given the taxpayers, and then they go through and they give you a calculation. And last year, they did a R E A settlement, and they did send us, um, our, our portion of what was due to us, which is why we had that increase that year, and obviously, it's, we're not gonna get that this year, so that's why it, it's dwindled down. Um, we received a B W C refund. Um, if we pay our workers' comp premiums early, we get a discount for early pay. So that, we did get, um, about a eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand dollars this year for paying that early. So, it was from last year, though, 'cause it's a rears, a year in arrears. Um, and then typically, we used to have advances that we had to do for grants and things like that at the end of the school year, if the state didn't get us the money, we, you have to ask for an advance from the state, and if you don't get it in time, you have to advance the general fund into the grant, so that you can pay people over the summer. We don't do that anymore, um, I, I wasn't used to doing that at my old district, so that's why you can see that in the future years, I have that dropping off to hardly anything, we'll make sure that we request those in a timely manner. So if you look at page thirteen, um, this is just kinda shows you our projected, projections and our five-year average annual increase or decrease in every single line item. I think the toughest, the, um, the toughest area, at least for me, is our purchase service, because it's continuously changing every year. Um, we have students coming in and going out, um, all of these special ed costs that we have increased has been really challenging to try to get a handle on, because we have new students moving in almost every day. We just had a couple more, um, yesterday, so it, it's, it's just kind of a, a volatile line item that we're gonna have to really watch to, to keep it on and make sure that we're, um, staying on top of that. So if we wanna go down a little bit more, now we'll talk about our revenue, this, our personal services, sorry. This is, this is one that's been, um, really awesome, I'll say to work with Todd. Um, he is very, very, very good, um, at looking at everything. The more information you give him, the more he can take and run with it, which is great. So he's been able to, we've had talked.
Like a dangerous dog.
Yeah. You gotta watch him, though, but, um, but, but no, that, when, when this first grade move, with him and John, and, and they were, you know, doing this first grade move, and being able to move kids down and really use all of the teachers in the best ways that we can, we're able to now, we have brought it to the board already before, talk about the right sizing, and talk about, um, able to, some of the people who are retiring, to not rehire and capture savings. So what we've been able to do, because of all these changes, which I'm not sure that's where it was supposed to be, um, I guess, I don't know why, if you look towards the bottom of that page, unless I, there we go. Yeah, we're able to drop the F T Es by a total of five. The important part about this, which is why, most of the reason why we have so much money in our five-year right now, is because we were able to reduce the current forecast from December, had six F T Es, a positive six F T Es for the bubble group that we were having to hire. But now with the retirements and the reductions, um, and the right sizing that he, that they were able to do, we are actually able to have a negative five F T Es in our five-year forecast, which is huge. I mean, that, that's saving us, and we had brought in that, that forward to you guys, um, a while back, when you were doing the first grade move, to talk about all the reductions. But it's over three million dollars in four years of reductions. And it's not just from the F T Es, there are a textbook, um, rollback that we're doing, a million dollars over four years that you were able to do, and I don't know if you wanna, um, elaborate on that, or if that.
Yeah, I mean, basically, that's one of the things with, um, Mr. Eckenberger going part-time, is I'll be taking over the elementary curriculum, which will be textbooks for a lot of it. And we actually met with the committee this week for the K through five, it's either gonna be math resources or math textbook, and we have a community member and parents on that committee, and we're gonna spend a year on really evaluating that. And the teacher spends some time with code school district, and we're gonna look at doing it as well. So there are some things out there now, with the standards changing, that one textbook just doesn't fit anymore. If you buy a textbook, you're gonna have to pay for that, plus all the resources. So the districts now are really getting economical, and the push for superintendents is to focus more on the instruction, because that's where all your money's spent, of the thirteen percent we actually spend, or something like that. So, there's some different things we're gonna look at, but we should be in good shape. Um, there are some other thoughts down the road about paying for textbooks, technology, and things like that. We're trying to get to the first phase and be able to get to that.
I know there are costs that we are gonna have to with all of these.
Right.
Um, we, I, I believe, Andrea, we have the college credit plus, we'll have to buy books for those.
Oh, yes, those are expensive books.
So we, we do have the money built into the forecast, though, for the college credit plus, so that's good. But we have those books, and then also, with all of these business, um, people enrolling in the business classes, they have to buy new books for those, and so we are having to definitely buy books still, but we have been able to roll back, um, a million dollars out of the forecast, um, for the textbook adoptions that we had previously had planned. So if you wanna go, is that purchase service? Yeah, this is my favorite line. Um, this is important for, for me to make sure I explain this right. If you, if you look under two thousand and fifteen, where it shows six point nine million, the previous forecast had six point six million. So we are over in our purchase service, and Todd and I have been watching this a lot, we've been talking about after every payroll, pretty much, we're about a hundred thousand dollars over in our sub-costs for the year, um, so far, and, and he's been addressing it. As I notice, things are at a skew, we, we jump right on him, and then he, um, you know, gets the buildings together and talks about everything. And so, we're really watching those sub-costs, so we're hoping for next year that they won't be as high. But, because I had a reduction in sub-costs planned already for this year, based off of, we had the waiver days this year, we anticipated being able to use the waiver days and not need to have as many teachers pulled out of their classrooms because of the waiver days. Well, we're still up a hundred thousand, so we're definitely addressing that, to try to, you're working on when the I E P meetings are handled, there were, this, there's a bunch of different things in motion, so that next year, we can really be on top of it, um, to make sure that those costs.
Well, thank you for commenting on that. You might have heard, board, that there are times to where, if we have a teacher who needs to leave suddenly in the middle of the day from, uh, the junior high to the high school, I have told the principal, send the kids to study hall. Um, what's happening is, is we, we had sixty people out just on Friday. And we get our subs through the E S C., who does a tremendous job, and they can't even fill them off. So when teachers need to leave, something happens, emergency in the middle of the day, or they forget an I E P., and we have to do internal sub-costs, it's twice as much when we do three periods of internal sub-costs as it is for a full-day sub. So, if all of a sudden, a teacher has to leave, there's not lesson plans made. So my, my position is, why would we pay someone twenty or forty dollars for every forty minutes, whether it's not gonna be a lesson plan anyway? Because if the teacher's there, and they leave their lesson plan, it's something, not gonna be able to come in and take off in a trigonometry class or a calculus class, they're just not gonna be able to do it. So we've been sending them to study hall. Uh, we spent twenty-seven thousand, was it the last quarter or something like that, just for internal sub-pay?
Hmm.
So, it, it's extremely expensive. So some parents, I don't know if the teachers have commented, the parents, you know, Mr. Petrie's sending kids to study hall instead of getting subs. No, we get subs. This is one that's unexpected, and instead of doing internal sub-pay, which, in other words, if a teacher has a plan, we will pay them twenty dollars for that forty minutes to cover for another teacher.
He said we had sixty absences?
Sixty absences on Friday, yes.
And how many?
And we've tried not to do any P D. on Fridays or Monday.
What percentage of our teaching staff is that?
Um, well, that's classified as well. It's, with our teaching staff, if it exceeds ten percent, we can cut it off. So, at that point, we were at a limit, that Ms. Vincent sent out an email, basically, that's it. But we're finding with the sub-costs, it's not only that, but when we have all of these new teachers. new teachers, there's a cost, and we're a hundred thousand dollars over. So when people hear we give teachers a raise, part of that is to keep them here because as we hire all these good people and they're young, they're going to make families, they're going to have things to come up, they need time off, plus then we need to train them to be able to educate a kid at a level of an experienced teacher that's on a year. So there's a cost either way in this qualifying. It just can't be calculated, all the savings, when we go from a retired staff member to a new staff member at zero salary. There is additional cost of training to be. So we are running into that right now. But it has been, this whole month has been below the top with absences, no doubt about it.
I think, and I think we've found too, looking back at last year and the year before, right around this time, it does look like if you're not, if you don't want to turn in your personal leave, you cash it in and you use it. So we do have a larger number of staff off typically anyway, but it is-
And it's easy for us to rack up a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, when you have a staff of five hundred people, and you consider a one percent increase to the entire staff, it's about two-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars. You could rack up a hundred thousand dollars in a couple of weeks with the amount of teachers that we have if there's a big influx of people taking off. So it is something we're addressing and looking into making sure all the procedures and everything are followed along with that.
So why it's important to make sure that we understand this is because what, typically what you do when you're looking at your purchase services, they do cost more every year. Every year when we get the new contracts from the ESC or from these private placement entities, they're always more than they were last year, they're never less. So we have been able to capture savings from the utilities that, for the energy project. So our purchase service account did go down for that, and then our debt service down lower in the general fund is picking up for that, so it's a wash. So the energy project has helped lower the purchase service costs. So you can see it's not, I raised it to six point nine because that's what we're anticipating spending this year from the six point six originally. But then what you have to remember is, is from that point, now that that threshold is higher, the inflation will go from there. So when you look at the previous forecast, it didn't reach seven million until 2019. And you can see it hit seven million right off the bat, and it's because we're starting out with a higher number. We're working, I know Lee's working really hard with trying to get some of the kids right now that we have out in these placements out back into the district, but there's also going to be a cost for that because they'll have to hire staff and they'll have to have proper equipment and things to be able to handle these students. So we're going to pay anyway, but it is cheaper to do it in-house if you can than it is to contract them out. So that is some things that we're looking at currently right now. But I do want to make sure, because when we get down into the last few pages, you'll see that number really looks like it sticks out. But year over year, it's not that much more. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year anticipating increase, but it increased three hundred thousand this year. About two hundred, actually, it was a little over three hundred thousand. It was about two fifty for the special ed increases and about a hundred thousand for our sub-cost increases.
Well, and so from our-
Yeah, go ahead.
From our, I mean, my thing is, it's like running a business. We're focused on the bottom line. So when we bring these people, these students back into the district, that means we're going to have to add an FTE. So then, I guess from now being through this, we've saved a lot of money, but then we'll get comments that, well, you've added a teacher here, you've added a teacher there. Well, it takes money to make money, even in education. We add a fifty thousand dollar teacher, that saves two hundred thousand because it offsets that cost of sending out to privatize special education services. So we're going to spend to add staff to reduce. Basically, where in the past, it's easy to hide your expenses through these purchase service contracts. You can go through the ESC to get administrators, and then it doesn't show up when people want to run, do a records request for how many administrators do you have in the district? Well, I'll just pay everyone but me through the ESC, and a lot of districts do it that way, so it doesn't show up that we have administrators on the case load. It's the same with special ed teachers, so on and so forth. Our issue is three hundred thousand dollars of our expenses right now in special ed, the kids never attended the first day in Spurano's school.
They were already, most of them were already placed in their previous district, they were already placed in a facility already. So when they moved into our district, they just changed their name of responsibility from that district to ours, and they never stepped foot in our buildings. So that was part of it. And then we had to pay transportation, too, for those, if that makes sense.
So money-wise, it's easier for us to hire a teacher and two aides at the cost of about a hundred fifteen thousand a year instead of paying three hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking at those types of options. However, our FTEs are going to go up as if we're adding expense, and if you only look at that part of it, you see that, but if the other part is pushing down what's leveraging our bottom line, is what's happening. So for me, that's just what we try to work out.
So we'll go to supplies. This one's pretty self-explanatory. We have reduced our supply account, that's where the textbooks are. We have reduced that by a million dollars over the forecast period, so you will see the reductions in those, as well as, I'm not sure how exactly it was done in the past here, but I learned fairly early on at my previous district that by cutting the purchase orders off at a certain time that people didn't continue to spend all the way up to the end of the year. So I did cut off purchase orders for our general fund back in March, on the 27th of March. So now only emergency purchase orders are going through for things. Obviously, we don't want anybody, you know, pizza party for kids or anything. We don't want anything to hurt the kids, but it just really, it really required the planning and for staff to get together and determine the needs that they were actually going to have between now and the end of the year and get those all prepared for. So it actually has saved money. So we're looking at about a hundred thousand or so that it's going to save for this year, and we're going to really push that for future years to have that cutoff date and to have people only, you know, purchasing exactly what they need. So it's working out so far. So between the textbook reductions and the reductions just by stopping the purchase orders early, we have saved, and you will see that that is a savings that we have saved in the-
You've had a very good follow-through with that, too.
Well, it's been, and it was, honestly, it's just educating the people. They're all, the staff is awesome, and they're always willing to do whatever you need, you just got to tell them. It works out great. Capital outlay, it's pretty, it's pretty much the same as it was in the forecast before. We have addressed the things that we're going to need for the first grade move, but with, obviously, you can see at the end of the day how much money this first grade move saved. This was a fraction, it was not that much. We just had to get some smart boards, and he's purchased a lot of them already, just trying to have everything ready, so.
Well, our maintenance guys and Mr. Pennell have went over to Jonathan Wright and looked at products that we haven't used in ten years, and instead of buying new, we've been able to really, John doing this a few times has been extremely helpful, because we've saved money that we had planned to spend, so he's done a really good job on that job.
Yeah, he really has, he really has. And he's just on it, too. He gets everything done. I don't know how he gets-
And he's got watches for the teachers already, he's cleaned the classrooms, so yeah, it's going very well. Thank you. Thank your maintenance guys, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so then we have our debt. Obviously, the debt has increased a little bit from the energy project, but like I said, we did lower the purchase service part for the utility section, so they are offsetting, so there'll be no increase. We're actually anticipating even getting more savings in utilities than our debt payments will be, but at least for right now, we have it one for one, that there is no cost, so if anything, it'll be just a savings from there. I do have a little bit of increases in our auditor and treasurer fees because once the public utility comes on, they will charge us fees based on the collection of those, the collection of the new pipeline money.
How much does something like that cost?
Well, it's state statute, but it's about four hundred thousand dollars a year in auditor and treasurer fees.
Like fees for them to process, getting us the money?
Fees for them to collect, go out there and collect the taxes and to collect the money and deposit it and then send us all of our EFTs. Yeah. It's expensive. We get charged for elections, we get, when they do the elections, yeah, it's expensive, but-
Well, Mr. Regal, people are going to take out and complain about something right there.
It's a state statute amount, so it's, the statute sets how much money they're allowed to charge, and they actually, Warren County typically does charge us less than that. Yeah, it might be closer to the three, upper three hundreds, but it is significant, yes, but, I mean, it's a statute, so we can't, they get to, you know, they can charge up to a certain amount, and they do charge us less than they have to, so I guess we should be thankful for that.
Wow. This petition, you know, I had already called-
And then obviously, the non-operating one, the last one-
Well, you did call about that, didn't you?
I had already called the auditor complaining about fees potentially going out.
I know, he emailed me back and told me.
That's a lot of money. I don't know what that entails, maybe it is hard work, but it seems like a lot of money.
They have a big, I mean, they have a lot of people, I mean, they have to collect for all of the entities, too, not just schools. They collect for city, they collect for everything, so.
Do they charge all them the same amount?
It's a state statute amount, yeah, so whatever they-
Wow.
However much, I guess it, and then our athletic transfers, obviously, we know about those, those are the transfers that we do for athletics, so they can meet their contractual obligations to pay all of their coaches. Okay, so if you look at the next page, this is the same thing I talked about, obviously, before, but you can kind of see the what-ifs. If we receive in what we are planning on receiving in already in our current forecast, you can see in the blue on the right-hand side, it shows our revenues over expenditures. Obviously, we're spending more than we're bringing in, but the more money we would get from the house bill, you can see those, the expenses over revenues dwindling slightly. I kind of get a little nervous to show that too much because I don't know what the state's going to do yet, but you can see at least what could happen if we do get more money in from the state. However, we don't have anything in here for the teachers' raises if we settle with them outside of the steps that are already built into the forecast, so obviously, those amounts would grow then, I mean, because those expenses are not built in to the forecast at this time, other than the steps.
So how much are we deficit spending?
Well, right now, two point five million for this year projected. But, I mean, we have all of these plans that were set forth a few years ago with the textbook adoptions and the capital plan-
Those plans don't even equal two point five million, though, that's the thing. I mean, we would have obliterated the district out of this.
Well, we lost revenue at the same time those plans were putting in place, so you-
Oh, I see, okay.
Those, you know, connect. I mean, if we had more of that, then the expenses wouldn't look so far out of whack.
Yeah, because our plan is now two point five million a year.
No, 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 no.
Wow.
So this is the kind of the end. There's the next few pages. Mainly, I want to show you the first page because this is the most important, where we're at right now. You can see, if you look at the previous forecast, it says November, but really, it was the one we approved. We started working on it in November and approved it in December. So you can see the additions and subtractions, where we're over, where we're under. So what we did this year is as we start, which, I mean, this is a great thing for us to do because what, we can show you the bottom line, but as we were spending more in our purchase service, we really tightened up and said, we need to, you know, we need to look at this, we need to watch this, don't do this if you don't need it, and we really rolled back. So where we were over in the purchase service, we were able to save money in our supplies section, which is some of the textbooks that we didn't have to buy this year, that we had allotted, that we were going to buy, and then also the rollback in some of the supplies by cutting off the purchase orders early. You can see that that pretty much almost accounted for all of the overages that we did have this year. So the bottom line is, is the only difference between the October forecast and this forecast right now for this year is one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. So we are pretty much identical to the October forecast of where we expect it to be for this school year. So that's really-
Wow.
I'm excited about that. So, and actually, I'm even hoping to kind of even approve a little bit on that before the end of the school year. We do have some things that we have applied for this school year that we're hoping to get back that might be a little bit more revenue for us, and we'll find out if those are approved here shortly, or if we're going to get it. I know they're approved already, it's just I'm not sure how much we're going to get, and I'm not sure if we're going to get it in June or in July. So that might even improve our revenue a little bit more if we get that money in. So operationally, we're just working on a few things. I'm also working on a payment system to where we can pay some of our bills by credit card, and we'll get a rebate for that, and we're looking to get anywhere from fifty to eighty thousand dollars next year for a rebate for that just by paying with credit card, and you're paying those bills quicker, the companies give you a discount. So we're working on all kinds of little things to try to breathe in any additional revenue that we can, so to even improve that. But so right now, we're pretty much spot on the October forecast. And then the future pages basically would show the October forecast versus this new forecast. So this is where you can really kind of see all of these changes, especially that John and Todd have worked on as far as the first grade move and all of these things. You can see where in the October forecast, or in the, well, I'll say October, but the November, December update, we anticipated having a six point one million dollar cash balance at the end of sixteen. With all of those changes that we have made, the reductions in the FTE and the textbook adoptions, we're expecting to have six point seven million dollars. In each page thereafter, it looks similar, which is what gets us to our ending cash balance. Our ending cash balance of the October slash December update was one hundred and seventy-three thousand and nineteen. Right now, we're anticipating having three million five hundred and seventy-one thousand. But I want to make sure we read it, that does not include raises in there for staffs other than the steps that were already accounted for, nor were they in the forecast for December either. It's just that with all of these reductions, with the move and the right sizing and being able to share resources between those buildings, he's been able to free up the money to be able to have something to work with anyways from the staff, for the staff. So, yeah, if you look at the very last page, this one, you can look on your packets year over year, it's the same thing, every year, we're saving versus the previous forecast based on those reductions that we did make. So this is the actual forecast here, so you can see, if you look at the fifteen at the very bottom, the very, very bottom, there's the eight million. We had eight million two hundred and seventy-one thousand in our previous forecast, we have eight thousand, eight million two hundred and seventy-three, so we actually have one million, one thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars more than we anticipated having, so it's actually pretty much even. So, like I said, right now, the forecast that we are approving or asking to be approved does show that we have that money in there, so I can't say it enough, whatever happens with the state budget and whatever happens with negotiations, we'll change that, and I will have an update to bring to the board that will reflect those changes once they happen. So that's it.
Questions?
It's a couple of comments, Mr. Anderson, comments?
Sure.
You know, my complaint with the previous forecast is that two to two point five million dollar deficit spending was continuing every year, and I do notice in this forecast that we're starting to curb that, and I appreciate that effort. On the one point three million dollars, which was a one point five mil reduction, let me, and I understand you guys have an issue with that, but let me just help you through that. This forecast that we have in front of us shows in 2019, we would have a three point five million dollar positive cash balance, which is pretty good. We'd have more, Brandon, we would have more from the end of 2013, but three point five is pretty good. We have cash in the bank every year up to 2019, according to this forecast, plenty of cash. Maybe a little short in 2019, we would ideally have a little bit more to payroll period, something like that, and 2019 would be perfect. If we're a little short in 2019, or whenever, I don't think the taxpayers have a problem giving back the one point five minutes. I think that, I would hope what they would say is, thank you very much, Board. You let us keep our money for all of those years up to the point where you need it. And I, you know, I just think that that was the responsible thing to do. We forecasted enough cash that we didn't see the need for it, and we're not their bank. People have a right to their own money, we don't need to hold it from them, and I think it's a trust relationship. When we need it, we'll go ask for it, and I don't think anybody, if you go back and you ask for the one point five mils, I wouldn't fight you on that. I'd say thank you very much because for that amount of time, you let me keep my money and use it myself, however I'm going to use it, and I appreciate that. You need it now, I understand, you, 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 you know, of course, you've got to go out and explain to people why you need it, but I don't think people hold one point five million, or one point five mils against you. I really don't. And so I just wanted to say that to help move past that issue because I think it's a positive for this district that we gave that money back and not a negative. And we have the, we have the, we have, we obviously, according to this forecast, we have the cash.
Right back on, I can't say it enough, though. We have cash if we don't give any raise.
But the exact amount of what it costs to pay our staff raises.
So what will happen is, is once we have something that we give, that's going to show that we don't have the cash anymore. And also, we just need to make sure that we remember that when we're rolling back mils like that and then we need it at a later time, they're paying that on the new value, which is going to cost more, and you don't get rollback at home set on the new levies, which is going to cost more, and you don't get roll back a homestead on the new levies, the ten and a half and the two and a half percent reduction that you would have had on the already existing levy. So I'm just.
I would, I would just say that there are uncertainties that we have in front of us. We are uncertain about how much revenue we're going to get, we are uncertain about how much our expenses are going to increase. The forecast that you put in front of us shows three point five million positive in twenty nineteen. And my message to taxpayers is, I think we did you right by giving you the opportunity to keep your money, spend it for yourself. And, you know, if the district comes and asks for one point five mils, don't hold the gases.
Well.
As long as it's.
I've heard, I've heard this, I've held my tongue, but I have to, and I'm not, we're not going to argue or debate it anyways. But, but I think you trivialize that, because you hit on the high points, Jim, there's no raises in here. And so when you say we're full of cash, I think that's just, I don't, that's not true, when, because most people do expect some kind of raise. And it just, it's kind of mysterious to me that the taxpayers that you, I've heard you refer to many times, approved that money for these children in this school district. They said the majority agreed with providing the funds for the schools. And quite honestly, I have a hard time thinking that, and I don't think it was five, I'm going to guess, I don't, I don't think it was mostly three, but I know, I think it was a five oh vote. But I'm going to guess that there were three people that decided that, well, we understand that. We're going to make a decision that unilaterally, we'll just, we'll give this money back to taxpayers. And I have a hard time thinking the three people have really had that, right? When the majority of taxpayers who went to vote decided that this fund should be for the schools and these children. So, you know, I've, I've, it is what it is, and it's over, it's done. We, I think we all should move on, and there's nothing we can do to change that, because you and other board members decided to give that money back. But the fact of the matter is, if that, if we had that money, we wouldn't, I don't think, we wouldn't be flush in money, but we would be able to provide the raises necessary and probably have a cash balance that would get us to where I've heard you say many times, get us to two thousand and nineteen, which is great. I think every board member would be in favor of that, but, but, you know, so, so, there you go, we have a difference of opinion, but I'm just, for the record.
Well, let's, let's make the record right. It was a five oh vote, there was no arm twisting, there was discussion and debate, and at the end of the day, the board decided on a five oh vote that that millage rollback was appropriate for a number of reasons.
Well, I stand corrected, there were five.
No.
Well, I know, let's just not, but let's just say there were five people who overturned the majority vote of people who went to the polls and voted. I think that's pretty audacious.
Well, I, we're not going to agree on that, because I think the people expect us to spend our money wisely. We had done that, and if we don't, if we don't see a need for it, I don't see why we wouldn't return that money to the folks. But I guess that's a philosophical point of difference. You think, you think that once, once committed to the government, it should always be the government's money. I think that if the government doesn't need it, that it ought to, that we ought not take more than we need.
We returned the exact amount to support our staff, almost to the sin.
I want to correct one other fact, though.
Okay.
You said that there's no money for raises, that's not true. In this forecast that Ms. Floyd presented to us, there's a step increase, and that step increase is nominally four and a half percent. And so to say that there's.
Not that high.
Not nominally, that's what it is, not everybody gets that because of the way the scale.
Two point seven four percent.
Well, when you average it all across, when you average it, but my point remains, there are raises in this forecast, okay? The question is degree. And so I just needed to correct you on that point, because you said there's no raises in here, but there are. And so, you know, we can, you know, negotiations are about the degree of what that is. But we don't need to debate the issue, the core point is that we're not, obviously not going to agree on, is that I don't think government ought to take more people's money than we need.
I think when the people decide, when they have a vote, and just, because you're, you're big on this, I know you agree with it, that when they decide, they go to the polls, and they exercise their freedom of choice, and they vote for something, then I think that ought to be honored, yes, I do. And I don't think five people have the, have the right, even though they're in the position, sometimes just because you can doesn't mean it's right. That they should overturn what, what, what the people in this community decided on. But we'll, we'll agree to this, it's okay.
I think we're going to have to on that.
We will.
I just, I wanted to just make a comment for myself, that I, I, I am very thankful for the administrative team that we have here and the board that we have here. I don't think you guys realize how much time and effort and stress that we have had to go through to make every penny that we could squeeze together to have something to get, to show, to have. And it's, I can't even begin to tell you how long and how much stress. We have cut everything that you could possibly think of trying to get money. And when that last levy was passed, they had not settled with the teachers, and after that happened, we didn't have money. So it already started to go to where we had to start to cut things just to make it. And that, that's part of it, it's just, it's forecasting ahead, that's why a forecast is so important, for it to be so close to accurate as it can possibly be. Because otherwise, if you never put anything in there for raises, and you never put anything in there, you have a false sense of security of money that you really don't have. And so I just, I, that's why I work really hard for that forecast that I can, that show plus you, that shows the most accurate picture that I can possibly show you of what is likely to happen.
Well, I would like, I appreciate all that. And from listening to Mr. Riano and Mr. Petroni in past years, I don't think you have as much information as we do. Maybe, you know, not anybody's fault that you've got a part-time status, but it's nice to see such a comprehensive information put forward.
Well, thank you. And it is, we have cut things to be able to support staff. From a parent's perspective, when you have thirty-eight percent of the staff doing it, it continues to roll over, this assumption of, well, I just tired someone of doing it, then come in and just open a book to teach it. That is not best for spring bro kids at all. So unless we could set philosophy, I won't go into that. But the bottom line is, yeah, we have cut things to get teachers. Teachers, custodians, bus people, administrators are raised to keep people here, because we have had nothing but constant turnover for three years, and it is not best for kids.
But also to say that, though, it's been nothing that's hurt kids. It's been looking at ways to share services and to spread resources and to consolidate things. It's nothing that's hurt kids, that's the beauty of it, is they've been able to figure out, you know, through planning with John and Todd and the whole staff, just being able to, how can we make this work without burdening those kids? That's, that's a lot of stress, but it's been very positive.
We cut from here on out, it will cut things for kids. We're down as far as we can go, before I can look at someone and say, we have very integrity in what we offer in our school district. But if we have to go beyond this, another half a million dollars, it will cut things for kids. Textbook adoption. Thank you. Andrea, would you like to talk about the textbook and novel adoptions? I think it's the high school history books.
Yes, we're looking at three new adoptions within our AP program at the high school, all of which are in social studies at this time. As mentioned earlier this evening, we have a new course, Advanced Placement Economics, we are offering for this year. It's coming here, microeconomics, with the hope the following year that we'll be able to pull in macroeconomics along with it. We have forty-five students signed up for two classes, so that is a new adoption. We have not previously had an econ course. Also, for next year, our ninth graders have the opportunity to take Advanced Placement World History. This is a new course, we have one hundred and thirty-six ninth graders signed up for that course, we're anxious to see how our ninth graders do at the AP level. And at the tenth grade level, AP US History is not a new course, however, we have an additional sixty-three students signed up as compared with this year. So we have over-doubled our enrollment in AP US History. As you may or may not recall from previous discussions, our AP level textbooks are somewhat dictated by the college board organization. So they give us an option of several different texts to choose from. Those are approved by the college board in accordance with the universities that accept those credits through AP. So all of the textbooks that you see before you are within the college board recommended list of texts for the AP courses respective to those areas in which we're asking for those adoptions. As I mentioned, the AP US History is not a new course, however, those textbooks are eight years old. We cannot have AP course textbooks and still get approval for the course if the textbook is over ten years old. So we would necessitate sixty-three additional texts for our AP US History course for next year, for our increased enrollment, and then turn around two years from now to purchase a full new adoption of approximately another one hundred and thirty-five to one hundred and fifty texts. So at this point, we looked at a full new adoption for that course in an effort to save money two years from now.
Good job. Good job to the teachers and Kyle and everybody else that's working on that, too.
Departments worked really hard.
Yes, they have.
So you're really lead?
Uh, yeah, Title I position.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
I can't help myself. Are these books on the list that is, on the, on the approved list, which is duly filed in the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction? You mentioned they were on the AP College Board list, but we adopted a policy recently that said that they have to be on a list duly filed in the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
You know, I'm going to have to do a little bit of research for you on that.
They're not.
The answer is no.
The answer is no. But if they ever are, we're going to be good, so now we can go over the rest of that policy and let the board do their job and pick what they want. Because technically, the board will do their job and pick what they want, even if they were on that list. Because the board can do, has the right to change their policy on when if they so feel.
Well, with the super majority vote, yes, right. So the policy is not right, there is no list.
But the policy just says there is a list.
I've already spoken to our attorney, we'd like to spend five hundred dollars to call.
We aren't really supposed to talk about policy, we're talking about a presentation of a potential textbook adoption. The policy specifies the requirements for that adoption, Dr. Bond. And one of those requirements that the policy has is that it be on the list provided by the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
You have the opportunity to go in.
I understand, thank you.
There is no list, right?
There is no list.
So, I mean, anybody that.
That language is in the OR, so that's where it came from. It's the difference of opinion, like a lot of thing in law, there's a lot of gray in law. We talked to Neola, we talked to our attorneys, the bottom line is, they're your policies. And you can make decisions based off of your policy as a board of five. So we'll bring, and once again, Dr. Bond is accurate, there's a lot of things to look at textbook, not just that.
I just couldn't resist the opportunity to, I guess, to pick at a scam, because I think I made the point that that line in that policy should just get removed.
Pointed, perhaps in the future we'll look at that again. May I continue on to nine point four?
Thank you.
Nine point four is the Title I position. We have had a Title I in the district. Our problem is, in short, we're outsourcing Title I. We're paying based on subcontractor's rate to three people. And the issue is, number one, it's just transient. Those people need to be included into our SE, our union, if you will, for people watching tonight. That way, they're entitled to benefits, they're entitled to seniority, and quite frankly, we are going to get a teacher that in the event we have to riff or something to that effect, these people have seniority we can use elsewhere. Because in order to, for us to hire a Title I person, they have to have a lot of credentials to come with them. So we're really hiring a valued person. Thing is, right now, they're not in to where they're a barbeuing member, so these people want to go to where they're going to have that security. Quite frankly, I can't believe our union hasn't said anything about this, because every district, I don't, and maybe they didn't know, but in every district I've ever worked in, they are part of the barbeuing unit. So we would like to include them into the barbeuing unit, because even though they're in that unit, that helps us a lot of times. And I know there's a lot of thought if they're in the union that is tough for us, but really, it's not in a lot of cases, because it allows us to retain the best, once they do get seniority, to some, to a large extent. So, long story short, that position needs to be underneath that umbrella. Now, the only thing I can tell you is, on the negative side of that, since it is seniority-based, if we were to get a cut in Title I money, we would at the last minute riff that position. So, I mean, while I'm here as superintendent, my philosophy is, we have to look at that bottom line in business. My job as CEO and here as CFO is to look at that bottom line as much as to look at academics as well. So if we get a reduction in Title I money, we're going to reduce that much in staff, because it's based on projections. At that point, we would reduce the last teacher hired, maybe not one of these Title I people, because it's based on seniority. So if we give them seniority today, they're included in, anyone we hire this summer, they're going to have more seniority than those people. So if we ever have to reduce based on Title I funding, we will, we reduce by the last hire and the certification title. So I wanted to let you know that.
So are they, I'm a little confused, so have we hired these people when you say outsourced, or they?
We have hired them on independent subcontractor contracts for three years. How, we're actually not for three years, for like seven or eight.
And what's even more weird is, we take STRS out, so then they also have to go file a two ninety-nine and pay some equipment tax. So I'm not sure why it was done that way, that it's not supposed to be that way, so we're going to get it right, and if we, and we have the Title I fund, that's another issue. Is that Title I really holds you, like, you can't, there's not a lot of things that you can use Title I money for. It has to be anything above and beyond you do in your normal amount of type of buildings. And we support all of our buildings, so it's a little tough, you have to spend this money. So it's honestly going to even help us, because with the added benefits that these people will get now, that'll actually use up some of our Title I money, which is good.
So does it cost neutral?
Well, we, we're using Title I fund.
It does not come out of the general fund.
Right, if they get benefits, it will be, it will cost more. The thing is, Charles, if we ever get pushed on this, we won't win it.
Oh, I've never heard of that.
I, I didn't realize until Tara tells me, we hire them, and then it gets transferred to center office, or to the treasury office they pay. Until she sat me down and said, here's how this works.
They're independent contractors, they pay their own money.
Right, the problem is, is the IRS, the term with the third employee, because we tell them where to work.
Exactly, I don't know how you go.
So I'm not sure, but it's, it's going to be right, and we actually, I told you guys last year that we do, I mean, I had to apply for a waiver for us to be able to carry over our Title money last year, because we had about eighty thousand dollars that we couldn't spend, because we can only use it for a certain amount of things. So this will actually even help us further be able to support that new agreement, looking at maybe a math coach or something as well for Title, in addition to help use this money up. We're getting it right, and we're using the money, so it's, it's a win.
That's the hope, but all we can do for you, that's the part we know of presenting to you, but I did want to let you know, once seniority kicks in, they will have more than others. So if we lose Title I funding, we'll have to capture that cost as a general fund, otherwise it'll.
It's far back in our book, we never lost it. The concern, I think we, a slight concern, but it's just because we don't know, your ENS data pools into this system, and it'll happen sometime in the summer when we send our reporting in. And based off of the numbers of the lowest economics of people's lowest economics, that will determine which buildings can be served. While we're moving some of the, you know, first graders out, then, then it will have to reorganize where the funding is. So that's the only kind. So that's the only kind of, a little bit scared because we have, it's always just been normal, you know, moving through the buildings. And so all of the buildings are usually typically the same way it's sort of done in the year. So it, that, that's the only challenge, but as far back as I've looked, we've never lost this kind of money. So we're not anticipating, yeah, we're not anticipating, we're not anticipating using it. So we don't want them to think it's a volatile thing that we lose funding from a long time adult. The only challenge is we'll see what, how, how it shakes out with the first grade. I don't anticipate them doing anything differently. If anything, we might, if anything, we might have-
You have to qualify.
Each year. And based on your plan, we would as well. Yeah, because we actually might be able to get through funding both third and fifth years, so.
And junior high. But anyhow, I want to let you know that because I know you don't like the riff situations. I don't either. But that is a possibility.
Moving on to, any public participation? We have to do.
I just have a question for you here. With the CCP, where is that in the budget?
The CCP?
CCI P.
The CCI P?
The College Credit Plus.
Oh, College Credit Plus. It is actually in our purchase service. We spent-
How do we estimate that with not-
We estimated two hundred and fifty, I believe we had estimated two hundred and fifty. Honestly, it, that's, I hate to say that, but we, they don't have to tell until, when do they have to let us know?
We won't have till August.
So we looked at how much we paid for the, as I say, opening enrollment, but that's not it.
PSEO.
The PSEO from last year was a hundred and sixty, a hundred and fifty-eight or so, so we did up to two fifty.
Yeah, seventy to one forty this year and we about hit that nail on the head on the one forty. We went to the one forty.
For the letters of intent?
Excuse me?
For the letters of, people that turned in letters of intent?
Unfortunately, the letter of intent has no bearing on what we end up with in the end.
Not even close.
So what was the seventy to one forty?
There, there was an estimate based on, on Tara's calculations and she hit it dead on.
Well, what happened was, so first year, we had PSEO and we spent about seventy thousand. Then they started really pushing the PSEO and the dual enrollment, and that's when that came on board. So we anticipated it was probably going to double based off of that. And I think it came in at one thirty-nine, so I think we're right, right on there. So we moved it up to two fifty for College Credit Plus and we're gonna have to wait and see what happens. So we're, the, the PSEO will go away, the College Credit Plus will replace that. So we're anticipating from the one forty that we had this year, about another hundred, close to a hundred thousand for next year. So that is built into the forecast and we're just gonna have to kind of wait and see what actually ends up happening.
Our tuition costs have gone up from PSEO and dual enrollment into College Credit Plus. The Ohio Board of Regents has set those fees, whereas we were able to do a simple negotiation with colleges prior for the per-credit pricing. I don't know how else to say it, Todd, done simple negotiations, but-
They went as high as they could, the colleges did.
They did. They did. And we also were not responsible for textbooks. So now, we're actually going to be paying more for a textbook than we were paying for tuition previously. So we have, we did not pay for the text prior, but we did pay tuition at our negotiated price with the colleges. However, now we're required to purchase the book at the price they set and we also are not able to negotiate tuition pricing.
You need to do it to any school?
Any school that's participating. So for instance, UD years ago participated in PSEO. They saw the prices, they didn't see that it was gonna be lucrative for them, so they're not participating. So there are colleges and universities who have chosen to not participate, typically in the private sector. The public colleges and universities are all participating.
So you're right, anybody, anywhere they choose. We can't say, oh, you need to go to Sinclair because we got the best price for them now.
Well, there's a cap. There's what they can't-
Hundred and sixty dollars per credit is the cap.
Right.
So paying four hundred and eighty, and in some cases, we were paying twenty-two dollars per course, that we may be paying four hundred and eighty for next year. We didn't have a textbook with that course, we may be paying two hundred for the textbook. So we could be looking at a seven hundred dollar fee for one student for one course with, that we were typically paying twenty-two dollars for.
So this is one of those things, it was very intention on the government's part, that we need to get more kids into college. But then it created this cap of the potential, all of you can make this much, but they never took into consideration, we were able to negotiate like good stewards and get it for twenty-two dollars and now we're paying four hundred and fifty. So it just, it makes zero sense. And it's one of those things we have to project and, right, we're cutting the best.
And it's another unfunded mandate. So they, you know, we're required to do it and we don't receive any funding for doing it. So it'll be an expense for sure. So I think we, I mean, I know you did all that background stuff, but you did like a calculation of about what we estimated, would, you know, how many we are doing PSEO and a guesstimate of the addition that maybe, you know, you thought would come on with this College Credit Plus. And so, I mean, it will have to be something that'll be looked at and determined, you know, shortly after school starts, how close are we thinking we're gonna be because it comes out each month. Like off the PSEO, it comes off of the foundation, so it will come off, so we'll be able to adjust it if it's gonna be higher and then we have to revise the forecast or look at reducing something somewhere else, cost somewhere else, so.
I think CCP is definitely getting a different, reaching a different group of people than with PSEO. I mean, I'm hearing a lot, I, we are definitely looking at it much differently than we were with PSEO. A lot of other people that I've been talking to are considering it and were never considering it before. And when you think about that financially across the board, and it's not just Sinclair, like, oh my gosh, what financially that could do.
We could come way off on that, another five hundred thousand dollar loss.
Yeah, you have a way of knowing is when they're not having to, to, to notify them. Literally, it's the first day they have to start college, like at any time before that, they can just not go and then they're, that's it. So it's, we won't know until the very last second. So it would have to be an October revision at that point if, if we were way, way off our projections, we have to.
But if the kids take it and fail the course, they owe us the money.
Yes.
Unless there, unless there's- Probably is not gonna be enough, but it would impact ripping a teacher because it's just gonna be a scattering of little bits here, little bits there, right?
It's too late. By the time we'll know if they can go to class or not, we may have classes of ten at the high school. We can't riff the teachers at that point.
Right.
So you're right, they could end up where, we had very small classes, all the way down to seventh grade. Very small classes, not a thing we can do about. Year after year.
So are we going to allow potentially some smaller classes, even though we say seventeen or whatever your magic number is? Are we gonna allow some smaller, if kids pull out at the last minute because they're doing CCP?
We can't. What I'm saying is, by the time August first rolls around, we can't, we've missed our cutoff terrific. What was it, July tenth or something like that? Beyond July tenth, we can't reduce staff.
But that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking you will shut down a class if there's not enough kids enrolled.
No, not once the school starts. Because if we shut down that class, then we have nowhere else for that teacher to go. So we might as well leave the class in place and let it go once school starts. Unless there's a class of seventeen and all of a sudden, we didn't know about this class of thirty-five, the, the teacher's certified, we're gonna have to teach that other class. But odds are, that's not gonna happen because they're watching the numbers so close now. They'll just reduce the numbers already in place.
We've already notified guidance of all classes that are cut and they're calling students down now. So they have till next Friday for definitive, for override numbers and classes that have been cut. So we've already decided what's running and what's not running.
It's a good question, a lot of people ask me that.
Any other, any other questions? Okay, like that. We'll move into executive session to consider the appointment appointment of this special district. Demotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Motion? Second? Roll call.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Motion passes.